Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this June twenty twenty second, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Due to the current local, state, and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero two one, with members participating remotely via interactive technology. This is a discussion meeting and no votes will be taken. The meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on Channel fifteen, and a recording will be available in both places. Directors and presenters, please remember to mute yourselves when not talking to avoid background noise. And for the benefit of all of us, and in particular for our interpreters and for those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, and into your microphone. Director Polly, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson. Director Alameen.
Here.
Director Ali. Director Surya.
Here.
Director Inz. Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Polly's here, Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Rep. Gabor Meskell.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is an enrollment update. Directors, we will take questions after the staff presentation. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, Student Representative Gabor Meskell, Board Directors, staff, members who are watching this evening. Before we begin our formal presentation this evening, I would like to thank our students and staff alike for a successful launch of our Summer Scholars Programming on Monday. I'm happy to report that as of last week, we had surpassed our summer enrollment goals with more than five thousand students registered for programming. This is encouraging because many students had become disengaged over the months of distance learning. Our aim this summer is to reengage students in learning and reignite their fire for creativity and education through a variety of offerings. Related to our presentation this evening, even as we're excited about interest in summer programming, we are paying careful attention to preliminary enrollment numbers for the fall. And as we've discussed many times in these meetings, this first year of implementation of the new comprehensive district design attendance boundaries and changes to choice policies and administrative regulations regarding placement could have significant impacts on our enrollment. In fact, we discussed that we may see a dip in enrollment before rebounding in subsequent years due to the anticipated benefits of people will begin to discover with the comprehensive district changes. As Senior Officer Moore will share tonight, while we've seen slight changes in enrollment, the dire predictions we heard about of a mass exodus from MPS if the CDD passed have not materialized. In fact, we're seeing some positive signs, and we remain positive that MPS families will not only stick with us during this transition, but roll up their sleeves and work with us to ensure that every child receives the CDD's promise of a well-rounded education. So with that, I will turn it over to Senior Officer Moore to share our preliminary enrollment outlook.
Thank you, Ryan. You gave me the reminder to unmute. So, thank you, Superintendent Chair Ellison, members of the board. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to present enrollment numbers to you tonight. And, you know, I was lamenting before I, you know, as we were putting together this presentation, that, you know, there's a lot of numbers tonight and a lot of, you know, some charts, but certainly not the color and, and, and I think in some regards, the excitement that previous presentations have had. But I, but I also want to articulate that the numbers you'll see tonight are part of a larger narrative, as Superintendent mentioned, relative of the comprehensive district design and our promise of delivering a well-rounded education regardless of zip code under the three goals of equity academics and sustainability. Again, as a reminder for folks, the premise is to centralized magnets, have stronger community schools. These stronger community schools will allow us to increase market share and as a direct response to parent needs. And so as we adjusted boundaries and as a result, and you'll see the numbers tonight, it allowed us to really invest resources into literacy, into ensuring that every student across the district next year has access to fifth grade music, that we don't have such large class variations in enrollment between our high schools depending on where the students live, that we're able to provide mental health support. We will have mental health support now across the district, in every school regardless of zip code. STEM for all. You know, I was surprised as we went to the CDD, that over half of our students did not have access to after-school programming. And so, again, for stronger community schools, we'll be able to have after-school programming, equity training for all, and of course, a focus on climate. So the numbers do and will tell a larger story in terms of a brighter promise for our students beginning Fall twenty one. Go to the next slide. So tonight, we'll talk about enrollment projections. We'll share some of the impact of the first year in terms of the reduction in small schools, other schools below two fifty or below. We have race identifiable sites, those are sites as of October nineteen. Our integration plan at the time were eighty-six percent or above students of color. And so we're seeing a dramatic reduction in RRS sites. Schools that are eighty percent or more free and used lunch, we're seeing a slight reduction there. And then we'll talk about, take a look at some magnet school data in particular. And then we'll have Associate Superintendent Cox walk us through the appeals process and some of the data associated with that. Because again, this is, anytime you're going through a boundary change and making adjustments relative to enrollment, you know, there are some challenging cases and situations that we want to respond to. And so Associate Superintendent Cox has helped lead us on this process, and she'll have an opportunity to share that process with you and some data that we've seen as a result of that. Next slide. So, just keep it in mind that when we look at these enrollment projections, certainly, you know, these are comprised of birth rates. You know, we take a look at our kindergarten enrollment numbers, attrition, so the extent to which students are staying in the district. So, and that's the opposite, that would be obviously our retention rate. Immigration is something that makes a difference. We saw, for example, now over the past three to four years under the Trump administration, declines in our non- So, so those are certainly considerations. But, but as you focus on the enrollment projections here, what I want to point out is, we began, you know, with projection of, it actually began with a projection of thirteen twenty-nine. So next year, we're going to be down thirteen twenty-nine. Now, this is a result of the pandemic. Also within this art, you are going to see some impact regarding the CDD. We're looking at, it's even split roughly. About two hundred and fifty students we're going to end up losing as a result of the pandemic, about two hundred and fifty or so we're losing as a result of the CDD. Both are certainly better than, and than we could expect. But you do see a decline in enrollment, and under the premise of the comprehensive district design, what we're anticipating is as we have stronger community schools, innovative magnets, you will see over the course of time, the decline in the rate of change, the decline in students that we're losing. So that when you get to FY twenty-five, we'll even out in our enrollment, and then we'll start gaining FY twenty-six. And so predicate is certainly on assumptions, but do believe that as we have more consistency across the district in terms of the areas of equity, sustainability, stronger quality of services, and that, and that stronger academics, that we will bring students back to Minneapolis Public Schools. And as a reminder, we have about a sixty percent market share. So there's thousands of students that can make Minneapolis Public Schools their first choice. So this is extremely doable, we're very optimistic in the plan that we have. I do want to point out to you, this is a slide from AMSD, and this is really pointing at, I think, the impact of the pandemic in particular. But, but the point of this is to show that, you know, not only Minneapolis, we are two point, throughout two point eight percentage of points from our projection, but Anoka, Hennepin, St. Paul, Seale, Bloomington also saw declines in enrollment below what they originally projected. And so certainly, the pandemic has impacted us. But if I, we go to the next slide, we can take a look at our kindergarten enrollment trends because there is a sign of optimism. I'm going to just identify two particular areas highlighted in yellow. The first is just our kindergarten placements, so we're pulling data from June one this year. And you see that our kindergarten numbers were declining. School year two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty nine oh six, twenty twenty-one, we were at twenty-eight, six before. So we're down relative to this time last year, about a hundred and forty or so students. And so that, that decline, again, going back to the previous slide, it doubled in terms of the number of kindergarten students that we lost. So about sixty more or so relative to our trend that we previously had. But if you look at the next, the further down this chart in yellow, no shows plays for the following year. What this is essentially saying is that these are students that as we return back to school, we saw came back at the kindergarten level. So we actually brought back about a hundred and twenty-nine students back as we went, returned back to school. So that is a positive sign, and that is actually allowing for that top line being dire as originally projected. So a very positive sign there that we are seeing students, we did see students come back as we move back to in-person learning from distance at the higher grade levels. Next, I want to point your attention to magnet enrollments and requests, and this is taking a look at free and used lunch. And so these are magnet schools, and I believe like eight of the eleven schools that we identified as magnets for next year were formerly racially identifiable schools. And, and that was a deliberate attempt to, as we're centralizing the magnets, to really, you know, increase accessibility to those magnets across different economic and racial lines. What we're looking for here are two things. We're looking at the current, the school current free and used lunch. And then we want to take a look at the lottery number. So you see lottery one, we had a second lottery to support economic integration. So we committed to looking at our first lottery, seeing how that went. That went down in recruitment for lottery two. But the goal is that we want our lottery, those applying, that free and used lunch percentage, in many cases, to be below the free and used lunch percentage at the schools. Okay, so for example, look at the Thune. So Thune is the second row. Current free and used lunch population right now is ninety percent. The first lottery, seventy-three percent of the applicants qualify for free and used lunch. So you did see that those applying did support more economic diversity. As the time the second lottery came around, and we redoubled our efforts to support economic integration, right, thirty-one percent of those applicants qualified for free and used lunch. So both lotteries, overall sixty percent applied where I did not qualify free and used lunch. Nine, you know, in the current population is ninety percent. So this is just a snapshot that's showing that we are economically integrating our schools because those that are applying through the lottery process are interested in the economic integration and the racial integration. And so there's some very positive pieces here. I'll use another example. Let's take a look at Green. Green, current population eighty-five percent free and used lunch. The first lottery, thirty-six percent free and used lunch, the applicants were thirty-six percent qualified for free and used lunch. Lottery two fifty-two percent. And so you are seeing again, the, the economic integration and subsequently the racial integration of our schools. And, and so you'll see this, obviously, with the reduction of racially identifiable schools. But a really good story here. Certainly can go more in depth. There are some really positive signs here. You see also at the bottom, Sheridan looks really fantastic. Sullivan, really good story. Sullivan's a school that is actually in a very integrated neighborhood. And as we went through the CDD process, what we were finding is that many of our schools, the neighborhoods were actually more integrated in some cases than the schools. So what you're seeing at Sullivan, for example, is you're seeing a number of families who are choosing Sullivan. So currently, they're eighty-seven percent free and used lunch. First lottery, fifty-one percent qualified for new lunch. The second lottery, the second push, twenty-two percent free and used lunch qualified. So you see that, again, those applying are supporting the economic integration of our magnets. And this is just taking a look at our student of color populations at those locations too. Using another example here, let's take a look at, you know, we'll take a look at Thune again. And you're seeing now, if we recall, one of the commitments we made was to support the transition. So we were allowing students who currently attended Thune, and it's a racially identifiable school, to stay at Thune if they so chose. And so I think it's a positive that so many students at Thune chose to stay at Thune. That, that showed that they were valuing the education they were receiving at that location. As I showed you the previous slide, the economic integration, though, you're seeing the free and used lunch percentages go down, both free and used lunch and our students of color. Not as dramatic, but again, as I show the next slide to you, you know, what you're going to see is we want to take a look at our kindergarten numbers. Let's take a look at the kindergarten numbers. Because the kindergarten numbers are really what I call your true magnet. So this is the first grade level at, at your K fives and K eights in which you truly are not having students currently attending. So these are your new students. So let me give an example. Taking a look at Green, that was the example I used. Green is currently their kindergarten's eighty-seven percent free and used lunch and ninety percent students of color. Their kindergarten enrollment, fifty-two percent free and used lunch, and sixty-eight percent students of color. So this is an example of how through a magnet program, you're actually both reducing a school that has a high concentration in free and used lunch and also a high concentration racially identifiable school, which is ninety percent students of color. You know, you're also, but you're seeing that across the board. I want to point that out, that you're seeing that across the board, these kindergarten numbers in which you're seeing economic and racial integration across the board with our, with our magnets. Again, showing that the taste, there is a taste for economic integration and racial integration. That's a very positive thing, and certainly testament to our communities for wanting to do some specialized programming, and also in some cases, supporting the goals in the CDD of racial integration. We also want to look deeper and take a look at the magnet request and enrollment by race and by free and used lunch and special education. Because what we're looking at, we want to look at proportionality. One of the concerns with the Equity Versus Impact Assessment regarding the Placement EDIA was that there was a concern that you would not, you were not getting families of color, families that qualify for free and used lunch, families who qualify for specification, that they were applying, participating in our magnet programs at the same rate as our, as our white families or families who do not qualify for free and used lunch or our general education students. And so one of the things you want to take, we want to take a look at is proportionality. So for example, let's use the African-American line here. At the kindergarten level, African-American families represent roughly thirty-four percent of our student population, but actually represent fifty-seven percent of the total requests. And so you see that in some cases, there's actually an overproportion. As we dig deeper, though, what we're finding is that we're seeing more middle income, upper income, as well as, right, those families qualify for free and used lunch. But there's a more diverse group of African-American families that are choosing to participate in our magnet programming. I want to move down and have you take a look also at special education. One of the commitments under the comprehensive district design is that we wanted to make sure that students with special needs had the opportunity to participate in our magnet programming. So you do see our special education students represent ten percent of our kindergarten population, you know, based on the request, and then, or based on the percent enrollment, and then twenty-one percent of those requested. So that's a positive. You're seeing also really positive things in terms of your free and used lunch, et cetera. So one thing to point out is that our white student population here, you know, is actually under. So you see forty percent of the enrollment, nineteen percent of the requests. So we need to do a better job recruiting our white families to support that goal of integration, and that's ongoing work. And I think that certainly there's efforts underway to do that. But I will say that following national trends regarding the research, typically with integration and racially identifiable schools, you do see a trend at first, your middle-income families of color coming back, right, to the district, coming back, integrating magnets, and then your white families will tend to follow shortly after. But this is really good news, year one, a really positive trend, and it's going the direction that we anticipated. See the same for sixth grade, I mean, it's something similar. So again, you're looking at proportionality here. You know, you see special education, you see proportional percentage of enrollment versus almost a percentage of requests. So that's a good sign. And so testament, Associate Superintendent Cox to your work, and generally to the team. Still, you see the under participation of our white families, and you do see some overproportionality representation for African-American, Hispanic families. And that's not necessarily a negative thing. So, but just something to take a look at, to make sure that we're not, we're not offering the opportunities from an equity lens for our families, both from a racial standpoint, economics, for special needs, and ELL as well. High school, magnet current versus projected demographics, sixth grade. Again, this is showing our free and used lunch and student of color populations. Again, those sixth grade classes, so you talked about kindergarten, at the middle level, six, seven, and eight, that new level would be at a Franklin in particular, or Anderson. Those would be new grade levels, right? So this is the first grade levels that don't include transition numbers. So you do see Anderson's more integrated, both economically as well as students of color, Franklin as well. And then Jefferson, it's not there. Now Jefferson, it was very interesting, you know, we're not meeting that goal yet. We do see a slight decrease in students of color, but we are seeing more free and used lunch students applying. And so again, additional work to do in that area. Jefferson is another location where the families really love that school. And, and so, which is a really positive thing, it's a really positive thing. And so a number of families chose to stay, which is, which is actually excellent. And there's opportunities for those families to have a quality education, and certainly room for other families to join the Jefferson family. You see a nice reduction in Sullivan as well. Moving from magnet schools, though, I do want to point out that we are seeing reduction in number of schools, or fewer than two hundred and fifty students. So, you know, through this boundary change, you know, one of the goals was to equalize enrollment across the schools. So you have about five schools, twenty twenty-one, that as of end of year had less than two fifty. And so moving into next year, you have three. So that's a positive, certainly a positive. One of those schools, Hall, is right on the borderline. I really anticipate we probably are going to end up with two as you begin the year. We'll go from five to two, but as of now, five to three is what we're forgetting. This is a bit more dramatic. So in October two thousand nineteen, as we began the work of the CDD, we had twenty-four schools that were identified per MDE that had eighty-six percent students of color. Now, as we made the identification through the process, three of those schools, through natural attrition, had less than eighty-six percent. But even at that twenty-one, current projections for next year show twelve schools are projected at more than eighty-six percent students of color. And that's certainly a big deal, in the, in the sense that across the state, across the nation, a district struggle, whatever definition that districts have, of how to move more towards having racially integrated schools. In this sense, the MDE definition, which is racially identifiable, and the one we use for the comprehensive district design, we are seeing a reduction in the number of schools that were, twenty-four to twelve, that were identified as racially identifiable, which certainly allows us to meet our goals within the state, our integration goals. So that's a very positive sign. We're not quite there in terms of reducing the number of schools that are eighty percent or more free and used lunch. We're only declining by one. And I think, as you recall, we're using eighty-six percent for RAS, eighty percent for free and used lunch. And so I think a lot of schools, while they are decreasing their concentration of poverty, they're not getting below that eighty percent. So they're probably going from eighty-six percent, ninety percent, to a little above eighty, eighty-three, eighty-four. But we are seeing a decrease in the percentage of schools. But as of now, only one school is, went from eighty percent. But we're already seeing a decline in schools that are ninety percent or above. I want to move to ninth grade placement trends. You know, one of the, as I mentioned previously, one of the goals of the comprehensive district design was to take a look at our high schools and really try to address the variation we saw in our high schools so that regardless of zip code, students would have a quality education at the high school level. And, you know, it's, it was very recently that we had high schools, comprehensive high schools that had, that were at three hundred students, and then other areas of the city at close to two thousand. And without question, that does impact the perception of quality. There's good teachers across the district, perception of quality. A number of students really impact the number of choices you're able to offer. So one of the goals we're attempting to do is try to move towards a model where we have our schools that would, comprehensive schools will have at least twelve hundred students and no more than sixteen to seventeen hundred students. So we started with ninth grade. And what we're looking at here, we're looking at ninth grade enrollment, and then we're looking at enrollment for twenty twenty, so this year, and now we're looking at enrollment for next year, so fall of twenty-one. And so you see a slight increase, the column to the far right, this lets you know the change. So you see increases in enrollment for Edison, Fair, Henry, Heritage, North, Roosevelt. A slight decrease at South, significant decrease at Southwest, slight decrease in Washburn, and, you know, premium school, a change at Wellstone. But, but you are seeing that shift so that we're able to provide a more quality experience across the city regardless of zip code. This is one of the impacts of that type of work. And, and this is, you know, this, this is the direction that we were expecting to see. It is holding true with our comprehensive district design. I do want to highlight Fair. Fair is a very interesting high school. Fair is a, a high, a high school magnet. And actually, thirty-five percent of Fair's population comes from outside of the district. So that is a magnet that draws from outside of the district, and it does a phenomenal job. I mean, you see their enrollment's grown, it's actually grown each year over the past three years. So I know that team is working hard as a magnet school, and I wanted to highlight that. Because that's very unique for us to have a high school magnet that's drawing over a third of their population from outside the district. So they've done a great job marketing in partnership with our communications department. And then we want to talk, take a look at the projected demographics. And so, again, this is looking at the demographics at ninth grade. So, you know, you see that Edison's remaining relatively the same in terms of demographics. You know, Henry is slightly down in terms of student of color population, free and used lunch. You're seeing a dramatic shift, so I would say a dramatic shift in North. That's as that Kenwood pathway is moving into North. Roosevelt and South are changing, and that's going to be interesting as we're moving forward because I predict those Roosevelt numbers will go slightly up in terms of their free and used lunch and student of color because the dual-language program will go from Anderson, and those students will funnel into a Roosevelt. and those students will funnel into a Roosevelt program, dual language program, um, at the high school level. And, and subsequently, those numbers in South will go down, uh, somewhat, uh, because those Anderson students that are in the dual language program, right, will shift to, uh, shift to Roosevelt. So, but we're keeping our eyes on those numbers to make sure that neither, that South does not become a racially identifiable school. Uh, they're, they're, uh, they're not closed at, at this point, the ninth grade at least. Um, Southwest, uh, keep a number. I know that's been an area of concern. And so that's something that we're gonna pay attention to next year and see what we can do to address, uh, those numbers. But that's the ninth grade. Um, I think Southwest is actually going from forty-five percent overall to about forty percent, um, next year. So they're declining about four percent, uh, uh, by their free interest launch. Um, and then Washburn, uh, is, uh, becoming slightly a little bit more diverse. Um, so, um, overall, uh, you, you do see that, um, our schools are becoming more diverse. And, and in areas where, uh, we have concerns, we're able to look at the data and, and take a look at it. Um, and we'll perhaps come forward with some programming recommendations, uh, to address some of the challenges that we see. So those are the high level numbers, uh, and, uh, totally open to, to questions. Uh, but I wanted to shift to, uh, associate superintendent Cox to talk about the appeals process, uh, because I think this is certainly an important component, um, of, of our boundary changes, uh, and, um, so that we're able to support the needs of, of our students, uh, in, in cases, um, in which that boundary change, uh, 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 the, and those families that apply for out of area placement, um, that there would be challenges for students to be successful. So I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, associate superintendent Cox and let her walk through the appeals process.
Thanks so much, Senior Officer Moore. Um, good evening Superintendent, uh, Chair Ellison and other directors. It's great to be with you tonight, um, uh, with kind of a sobering, uh, topic as we know. And we knew with the comprehensive district design, there would be families who, um, wouldn't get their out of, uh, out of area placement that they wished. So we did develop a appeals process. We felt it was really important that families have a way to share their specific and unique situations, um, before we made a final decision regarding their child's school, um, assignment. So I wanna tell you a little bit about the appeals committee. Um, they are comprised of members of our district mental health team and also leadership roles, including health services, counseling services, psych- psychological services, social work services, grade relevant school principals, associate superintendents, special education, educational equity, and our mental health support team. Um, so as we got together, one of the important things we did to norm before we got started was to really talk about kind of the values that we were gonna bring to the table. And we agreed collectively as a group that we did believe in the fundamental vision of the comprehensive district design and its intent moving forward. We also agreed that it would be a rare situation in which we would agree to modify the students assigned, um, comprehensive district design, uh, placement. So let's get into a little bit about the criteria. Um, we reviewed them and were accepted or declined based on the following, um, criteria. The first thing we looked at was health or mental health, uh, place, uh, reasons. Um, we now, as, um, Senior Officer Moore talked about, have mental health services in every school. And we've embedded them in all tiers of our multi-tiered systems of support. Um, every one of our schools has not only, um, core mental health services, they have small group, uh, services provided by, um, our amazing support staff. And then they also have a mental health partner who can provide really, um, intensive therapeutic support on site. Um, our partner agencies are very well aware of the changes the CDD will bring and are working together, um, to give warm handoffs, um, for students that it will be transitioning to a new provider. Or we might in some circumstances, if the family, um, would, would like, keep that original provider, uh, or therapist. Um, so areas where we pay particular attention to and granted exemptions, where we're really looking at students who might have had a history of self-harm, a history of eating disorders. They might have trauma associated with the newly assigned building or some, um, traumatic event that made being in the current building, um, very important or critical to their mental health services. We looked at to see if there were cases of bullying that might have happened at the newly assigned schools. When we also looked at accessibility of the building due to physical impairments. And then finally, medical conditions and making sure that we had the right supports for a student and what they needed. So those were, um, some of our underlying criterias we looked. Now let's look a little bit at, uh, what the data showed us, um, after our team reviewed. Um, at the K-five level, there was a total of fifty-two appeals, um, request. And we did approve five, which brought us to a total of nine point six percent. At grades six through eight, we had fifty-one, um, number of appeal requests. We approved nine of those, um, at seventeen point six percent. And at grades nine through twelve, we had fifty-seven appeal requests and approved four, uh, at seven percent. Now, the team is still reviewing some appeals that came in after the deadline or were very complex cases that needed further brainstorming and talking through. We'll tell you that some of our decisions were not unanimous. I would say most were, uh, but if they weren't, they went, then went on to. To help them through the transition. And we had many families who took us up on that. I wanted to end just by saying, there were a lot of lessons learned. First of all, this was a very challenging process. Um, I think our, our team really had a lot of empathy for families, um, and for their students and the appeals, um, applications they, they put in. Um, we definitely need to work on making this process more equitable and accessible to all our families. We did see a disproportionate number of appeals that came from a small number of schools in certain areas of the city. So we do have some work to do to ensure that the process as we move forward, um, is more equitable to, to be able to be open and, and, and to be accessible to all families. And then I think we'll also need to continue to process what the appeals process will look like in the future. I think it's important that we always have one. I do believe this year was a especially, um, large transition year, um, with the CDD. So we might not have as many needs, um, in future years, but wanna make sure we do have a process to make sure that, um, we're hearing our families and our students, um, as they look at the placement process. So that's all for me and the appeals data. Superintendent, I think I'll turn it back over to you and to moderate questions.
So thank you, Senior Officer Moore, for your, your presentation. Um, Chair Ellison, at this point, this does conclude, uh, our portion of the presentation. And so I think we stand ready to hear any questions, uh, that board members might have, and we can hopefully respond to them this evening. Um, or if not, we can certainly follow up in, in writing.
Thank you, Superintendent, um, and Associate Superintendent Cox and Senior Officer Moore. Thank you for that presentation. Board members, if you are remote, if you could use the raise your hand feature, to let me know if you have a question or comment. Directors who are at, in the assembly room, if you could let Director Arnison know. Um, I'll start with, um, Director Caprini.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, um, and thank you, Senior Officer, uh, Moore and Senior Officer Cox for the presentation. Um, two questions. Um, first, um, what are the efforts that schools are, uh, doing to recruit families? Um, and that's part of it. And then specifically, white families. So that's two parts. And then the second one is, um, were any of the schools that, uh, students were placed in, were any of the staff from the school, the receiving school, um, part of the conversation in, you know, um, what their school has to offer, you know, uh, just this whole transition piece? Um, because I guess I feel like it's important, it would've, it would be important to have, uh, I'll just use Henry as an example. If there was a parent who's, who didn't want their child to go to Henry, I would hope that, uh, Principal Abdullah and his team would be able to, um, be a part of, uh, talking with that family to support them and feeling, um, welcome and more comfortable. And, uh, so, so I guess that's, that's my question. So, so what's up?
Chair Ellison, if I may respond, Director, Director Caprini, thank you for the question. I'll start with, um, just kind of providing an overarching view of the, the recruitment question you had. Um, I know we had this discussion, I think it was after the first lottery and the, the reaction to what we had for numbers. Um, but subsequent to that lottery, there was, um, an effort on a number of schools to provide greater outreach beyond just the, what we would traditionally have when we had in-person learning going on. Um, you mentioned Patrick Henry High School. I know Principal Abdullah, um, did an outstanding job of putting together a video and providing that, um, through social media. That was something that was shared with other schools. And, uh, in that sharing, there were many more videos that were produced and put out there. Um, in some cases, we had partnerships. We had schools that were now feeder schools to different, um, middle schools where they partnered together. And so they provided that, that resource to families to, to take a new look or, uh, uh, consideration of their school. In addition to that, the idea of recruitment and, uh, um, messaging for families continues to happen as we've gone through our interview and select process. We have new physicians in many schools, new staff. And so there's a greater, um, amount of outreach that's happening now with those new teachers coming into the building, um, wrapping up, you know, what they just finished this school year. So we anticipate they'll have some of those discussions in early, um, in August, you know, when they return back to kind of welcome families in and do a, and, uh, returning to school. Um, we also anticipate that there will be more potential, uh, recruitment to families as we start our school year up, as word of mouth happens. Um, you know, when students are actually in the building and they're seeing the new, new facility that they have now as part of their, um, trajectory for whether it be elementary, middle, or high school. Um, so we're looking at a, a number of things there in terms of the recruitment that will be happening going forward. But certainly wanted to highlight what was being done at the school level from principals, um, communicating through social media with videos, as well as reaching out to their neighboring schools or their transitioning schools. Um, and I'll ask maybe Senior Officer Moore or Associate Superintendent Cox if you have other pieces to add because I know we have, in addition to our community schools, we have magnets that have done a lot of work. And also I know our special education department has really, uh, helped promote the, the transition for families.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. I, I, I can just add, I, I know that our principals, uh, work really hard in, in terms of looking at this work as part of their climate effort. Uh, and so, uh, uh, principals were given a list of, of students that were transitioning, uh, to their schools and they made phone calls. I saw, uh, at locations, uh, thinking in fact of a really phenomenal, uh, session that the principal Marcy, you know, as they went to a gray configuration, for example, and, uh, the middle schools, uh, principals that were, would be the new receiving schools were all present and presented about their schools. And it was great to watch the principals present to the new, to the families that they would be receiving about their school. Uh, so there was a lot of work, uh, between schools and between principals, uh, for transitioning schools. But also as Superintendent mentioned, uh, lots of virtual open houses, uh, lots of personal phone calls to families answering questions. For example, I know the principal at, at North High, uh, called parents. So she, she diligently called parents and welcomed them to their, uh, to North High. Uh, so I would just, I do wanted to call out that there was a lot of effort, uh, made by our principals. Uh, in addition to that, uh, you know, there's, there, we tried to, and, and I'm interested to see what the final results look like. Um, we did, uh, have some early childhood opportunities, um, at, at some of our magnets, um, in which we were looking at having integrated early childhood opportunities, um, at Sheridan, Jefferson, uh, Patthune, um, and Sullivan. And so we were, we were trying, we don't typically, um, early childhood programs, they're predominantly for families that qualify for interest launch. Uh, but, but we actually bought more seats in other locations across the district so that we could be able to have integrated opportunities at the early childhood. Again, the goal is that those families at the younger ages will participate in the early childhood program at those magnets, and then they would get admission into the kindergarten program. Uh, and so again, those early childhood programs are more economically and racially integrated, again, than those kindergarten grade levels. So that's something that, uh, parents are bought into and it's a win-win. Um, if you're able to get, uh, families choosing integrated, uh, early childhood. And we know that the positive impact of early childhood education on academic achievement, so the dual integration strategy and academic achievement strategy, um, having early childhood programs, uh, to support integration. So those were some efforts, uh, Director, uh, Caprini. Um, and, and I think they're yielding some positive results and so, uh, but I, I think a lot of this work, uh, I'll be quite honest, is word of mouth. You know, as we're transitioning, the climate work's gonna be critical, outreach, uh, making sure that, that, um, you know, as Associate Superintendent Cox mentioned, it's the personal phone calls, um, and, and just welcoming those families to the schools. Uh, and, and that seems to work. I do believe that those numbers will increase, uh, both, uh, you know, our, our white families as well as students, uh, families to, uh, don't qualify for free interest lunch. I've seen it nationally in, in the research. Um, the numbers for the first year actually look very positive, uh, to me. And, and I always have to remind myself, this is the first year that we're doing this. And we're coming out of a pandemic. Uh, it's, and we're coming out of a, a racial reckoning, uh, in the city of Minneapolis. There's a lot going on that impacted our ability to deliver. So when I look at the numbers that I'm seeing, uh, it, it really, uh, supports my, my belief. And it kind of fired up in, in terms of the values, morals of folks in Minneapolis, um, and, and their desire, uh, to have economic, uh, and integrated learning opportunities. So, so we'll get there. But it's certainly much better than I, um, had hoped for, uh, for the first year. Um, but I, I wanna, I want to call out our principals, uh, for their hard work and making those personal phone calls and, and having the virtual open houses, uh, across, and, and I see them working better together. And I, and I'm starting to see us move towards, uh, one Minneapolis, um, and moving away from this idea of competition, right, to this idea that, that if everyone's healthy, uh, then we're all healthier, right? And, and so, uh, um, those are some things that I saw.
That's awesome. And, um, first I wanted to apologize to Associate Superintendent Cox for, um, not using her correct title. I refer to you as senior officer, so I apologize for that. Um, I asked the question because I wanted the community for the, the, the listening audience to hear the answer because I, I'm, I'm aware of all of the work that's gone into recruiting families and I'm extremely proud of, of, of the work that they've been doing. Um, so I, I just wanted, uh, the community to hear the district say, um, you know, what's actually happening and, uh, pat a lot of those principals on their backs and the co- collaboration that's happening with, um, the middle schools and the high schools. It's just really exciting. So, uh, thank you for that work. And then I'll stop there and let, uh, Associate Superintendent Cox answer the second question.
Yeah, I would just, um, add to what Senior Officer Moore said, that we had many of our schools have new, um, types of special education programming in their buildings. So our, our department really worked with them to make sure that they were welcoming all families, um, into their, uh, into the building, that we had spaces identified so as parents were taking virtual tours, they could really see where their student might be. Um, I would also say that we are watching the numbers very closely, weekly, um, in regards to our students receiving special education services. And we are in constant communication with those principals, adding support where we need it, um, as we look at enrollment numbers. So that will be happening all through the summer. I will say for the appeals process, um, for those, um, for those thirty-two families, they are getting an intensive support through the transition. For the other families who, um, did not get their, um, their placement appealed, um, approved, um, we know that we have contacted those support staff in buildings to make sure that transition goes smoothly and to make sure that they're helping through that. I do appreciate your, um, suggestion, Director Caprini. I'm gonna follow up with our placement director to make sure that our principals are also notified because I think that makes a huge difference for families to feel welcome. So I appreciate that, um, comment and suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, Director Arnison, are there any questions in the room?
Yes, thank you, uh, student representative.
So I was missing the, oh, am I interrupting? Oh, sorry. Um, what are the things? Oh.
Yeah, it wasn't on before, but now it's on. When it's green, it's on. There you go.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. So what are some of the things that are being done to continue lessening the high poverty concentrations in schools? And then is it appeals?
Sorry for interruption, Student Representative Gabor Meskul. Can you just speak right into the mic?
Wait, like this?
Very close.
Okay, sorry. So what are some of the things that are going to continue to be done to reduce the concentration of high poverty in certain schools? And then will the appeals committee focused on the mental health of students transitioning into different schools in Minneapolis continue?
Okay, I'll make sure I heard the question that you asked. The first one was, what are we doing to address the racial disparities in terms of the population within the buildings? Is that right? Oh, the poverty, the high concentration of poverty. How are we addressing that in our buildings? And then the second question was, will we continue to focus on the mental health supports of those? Will the appeals committee continue to focus on supporting the mental health? Okay. So the first one, what are we doing to address the high concentrations of poverty? There are a number of strategies that we've been looking at. One had to do with how we set up our, I guess, guidelines of what our targets on what we wanted to accomplish in terms of the poverty numbers. And I'll ask Senior Officer Moore to restate those so I don't misspeak and say what those numbers are. But we were trying to find target populations, target numbers, and our goal was to, through our policies and through our monitoring of how we moved our lottery, that we thought we could manage some of that through the lottery itself. The second question you asked, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Cox to speak to, but I think it was, again, how are we ensuring that we're, through the appeals process, still working to support the mental health of students in the cases where they didn't receive the appeals? So Senior Officer Moore, could you take the first and maybe explain again that range that we were hoping to target with our concentration of poverty? And then describe a little bit about how those targeted numbers and the monitoring of the lottery process could support our goals.
Thank you Superintendent Charleson, Port Member Gabor Meskul. Thank you for your question. So our lottery, you know, as we looked at our student placement policy and regulations, we wanted to ensure that our magnets through our placement process would reflect the district average for free and just lunch. And the number we landed on was 60%. And then we said that, those 60%, so we didn't want our magnets, as we're looking at those kindergarten numbers, our goal is that we want to make sure that our magnets were 60% free and just lunch and 40%, or 60% free and just lunch and 40% non-free and just lunch. And so through guidelines, we place, essentially, you have two separate lotteries, and you have slots reserved for both free and just lunch and non-free and just lunch. And then that is support, having those integrated opportunities. As mentioned before, though, the challenge, one, this is why we showed the kindergarten numbers and the sixth grade numbers. You know, we provide, one of our values was to support families staying in those locations that we're turning into magnets and/or if they're formerly of a magnet, we allow them to transition to a new magnet with the same theme. I want to just point out, one of the challenges of this work is that we have an extremely segregated city by poverty as well as race. And ultimately, I think the biggest thing we can address in terms of reducing those numbers, certainly we can address market share. So there are families that aren't attending in those attendance area that we're going to pull back with stronger programming in our community schools. We're going to pull those families back, and they're going to help diversify our school locations. But we're going to need to partner with the city on having affordable housing throughout the city of Minneapolis. Ultimately, that's how you're going to get those numbers to dramatically shift. There's areas of the city that does not have affordable housing, and so that does impact our ability to economically integrate. We are seeing some positive signs again in our magnets, and I do believe we'll see some positive signs as we increase the market share in our local attendance areas. We believe with stronger academic programming, though, you know, that we're going to increase enrollment and then also economically integrate our schools as much as possible. And again, the big constraint is, when you look at economic integration, outside of our magnets, if you look at our community schools, is affordable housing and the lack of economic diversity that you see throughout the city. And that's something we need to partner with, with the city government, the mayor, as well as the city council. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks Senior Officer Moore. If I could have Associate Superintendent Cox just speak to, again, the supports that we have around mental health and how the appeal committee is assisting with not only making sure that transition happens for our students this year, but the considerations for the future.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent. So the students who appeals were approved and their families, those are students who are receiving very intensive mental health supports, both from our internal staff as well as our partners, as well as also other agencies in our community. So they'll be followed as they either stay in their placement or whatever decision we made at that point. The 32 families who we have offered support through the transition will be, each one will be assigned a mental health support specialist if they choose, and it's, of course, their choice, a mental health support specialist. And the reason we did that was, we really wanted someone who could have that kind of a level-up view, who could see what was happening at the school that they currently are attending, and be able to make that transition of the supports with that to the new school. We know that staff may be changing. We just wanted to make sure there was someone who was walking that family through that transition. Our mental health support specialists are also very connected with the building, mental health teams, so they will be able to help make sure that there's a warm handoff between the two. For the other families, we'll be watching and just making sure that if they need anything as we move through, we know our internal staff, our school social workers, our school psychologists, our school counselors are really going to be watching those families to make sure that they're welcomed and that the supports are moving forward. And as I said, our agencies are very aware of what's happening in the CDD. They know, are working with their families on school transitions and making sure that they're working together and they have all the information they need to either offer the same support so the student doesn't have to change providers, or doing a warm handoff to that new provider at the new school. I will say the reason why it was so important to me that the district mental health team was part of the appeals process and sitting on that is, this is not only an individual student, but I also want to make sure we were looking at the systems work, right? And so I think you're getting to that when you say, how are we moving forward? And we started to hear what services families really valued in their appeals and wanting to make sure that we have that consistently across the district so that no matter what school you go to, whether it's a pathway, a choice, a magnet, all those services are very standard across. And so that was really important to me, that we were looking at those systems pieces, too. You know, just as a reminder to our families out there, our mental health hotline will continue to operate through the summer. We'll have those services available. Also, you know, if you feel like your student needs something and they're in summer programming, we have a school-based mental health partner at every school, as well as a school social worker who are there to meet those students' needs. If your student isn't in summer school, call the hotline and we'll get you connected to more supports as we're going on. And then really looking, this week, our teachers have the opportunity to attend a mental health institute. We're having two strands, one for classroom teachers and our ESP staff, and one that's more of a deeper expertise for our school social workers, school counselors, licensed school nurses, and school psychologists. So really looking forward, I know we're halfway through that and really excited about the learning that's happening there. We're also going to be offering that in the fall for those teachers who couldn't and other staff who couldn't participate this week with summer school starting and everything. It was a really busy, busy week. So we'll be moving forward with that. And also looking forward as part of the parent participatory evaluation process, our parents said they were really interested in having a parent institute, so we're working on that this summer also.
I think it's really important, especially for a lot of the students who didn't get their appeals to be heard, that they continue to receive the support from the district in those capacities.
Thank you, Student Rep. Gabor Meskul. Director Jordan, I saw your hand up, and I saw your hand go down. Just wanted to make sure you have an opportunity to speak. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I believe, I believe Rochelle Cox answered my question I was thinking of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Arneson?
Thank you. I just want to check, Director Enz, Director Ali, do either of you have questions? Nope. Okay. Great. Well, I do have a couple questions slash comments if we have a moment, if that's okay. I'm just going to take my mask off so you can hear me. Okay, so, one, I just want to thank you all for presenting. I'm kind of looking both ways, the superintendent's to my right, and the screen is in front of me where I can see Associate Superintendent Cox and Senior Officer Moore. So forgive me as I kind of go back and forth here, it's a little awkward. All right, but I do want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for providing this information. I think this is a really good opportunity to monitor so many of the goals that we talked about during this CDD process and many, it's a very clear highlight. So I really appreciate this discussion tonight. I have a couple, just a couple of rather brief clarifying questions, if you wouldn't mind. The first, I'll just say them both. The first is with the high school enrollment. I'm really glad to see more balanced numbers. I know that was a really important goal with this project. That said, I noticed that the South numbers appear outside of our goal, I guess, of our ideal number. And so I am just wondering if that, if we think that's related to boundaries, if it's just a large number of students who live in those boundaries, or if that might be related to something, something different, maybe a citywide program, or if we're expecting those numbers to, it's just kind of the transition and we expect those numbers to evolve. It looks like we have still pretty much close to 500 students per class, which would, you know, put the school at around 2,000 students, which I think is higher than we were hoping for. So that's my first question. And then my second question is about the special education. Special education, first, I just have a comment and just say I'm really pleased to see that such a high percentage of families with children with special education needs participated or expressed interest in our magnet schools. I know that was something we specifically talked about with the CDD and that was not happening in many of our magnet schools, and it just really wasn't accessible to special, for children who need to have some extra special education needs. So I'm excited about that. And wondering, and this is more about placement, not necessarily appeals, but just wanting to confirm, if I recall, we were working individually with, or in a small scale, I guess, with families or children who have IEPs and thinking about their placement. And so it might have happened in the appeal process, but it might have happened actually before, like kind of in the initial placement. So just wanting, it wasn't specifically mentioned in the appeals, but I believe, and just wanting to confirm, that we took into consideration IEPs and like services at schools and that process. So those are my two clarifying questions. Superintendent, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, thank you, Director Arneson, for your questions. I'll first ask Associate Superintendent Cox to respond to the special ed one, but want to make sure I'm also signaling the second one, which was around specifically, you're looking at the ninth grade placement trends, I believe? And you mentioned South, as in South High School, or just the general? Okay. And so Senior Officer Moore, I think the question coming up for you is, we noticed that the numbers for the South High are right, for ninth graders, are, it's right around, excuse me, right around 500. And just doing simple math, and you add that over the course of a high school career, that seems to be a very large population. So how are we?
Four classes.
Yeah, four classes. So how are we managing that? Or do we anticipate that those numbers will hold at that level?
Or just kind of the cause, is that just kind of an anomaly? Is it related? I guess what I'm getting at is, is it related to the boundaries? Is the boundaries, like, do we accurately predict the boundaries? Are we comfortable with that number related to the boundaries, I guess?
Got it. Okay. So Superintendent, Associate Superintendent Cox, could you speak to the special education question, which was really around, what were the considerations for students with special education and their placement? And I know the individualized education plan is a key element of that consideration. And I also just wanted to reinforce the acknowledgement of our prioritization and our focus around special education throughout the comprehensive district design. You know, with close to 20% of our students qualifying for those services, I think you can see throughout the process that we've had and even the communication and presentation tonight, how special education students continue to be lifted up and acknowledged as a critical part of our redesign of the district and the supports for them. So I'll turn it over to Associate Superintendent Cox.
Thank you. Yes, we, so we are ecstatic about what's happening at the magnet programs and really reaching out to the principals, really gearing up for support, and really wanting to make sure that those citywide programs or programs that have specific disability areas for our students receiving more intensive services are really mirroring and being inclusive of the programming of the magnets. So if you are in a program for students with autism and you're at the magnet for arts, you're going to see arts in your citywide program just as well as when you're included, as well as when you're in your, in your special education classroom. So very excited about that. We really focused on those federal, those students receiving federal setting three. And so those students who are getting more intensive services, as well as spending more of their time in special education than they are general education. We wanted to first make sure that, A, number one, we were following the same, what I'll call rules, as general education. So those students who are already in a high school, we were not going to move them. We were committed to keeping them where they were so that they were able to do that. The other piece that we really looked at was making sure that those students who are federal setting three students did not have places where they were moving between three schools. So we tried to really reduce their transitions, especially at grade four, five, and seven, eight. And so those kind of big transition years, we looked at making sure that we keep kids where they were so they wouldn't have, have three transitions in a row as we're moving forward. You know, I know that our teams are doing a tremendous job of moving materials, moving interventions. We're having everything turned really back into our professional instructional center so we can kind of relook at it, make sure everything is complete. And then we're looking at the profiles of each of our classrooms in each of our schools so that when they arrive, we actually are going to have the interventions that we feel would work best for those students already at the school, so that we don't have a lag or a wait for those interventions. Of course, as teachers get to know their students and as IEPs teams make decisions, they can move in and out of interventions. But we really were committed, and I just can't say enough about our department staff, as well as our teachers and our special education assistants who have been working so hard over the last couple of weeks to really make sure that we are ready to go for students and are able to pick up those interventions and that specialized services starting day one when students are in their new site.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer your question, Director Arneson, Charleson Superintendent. You know, I really appreciate the question, because I want to, I'm actually very confident in those numbers declining. I think the dependency will be the dual language program at Anderson. And so I'm expecting anywhere from 50 to 100 students that would normally go to South, so they're normally pathway to South, will actually end up in Roosevelt as we build up that dual language program. So there's a pathway from the dual language program at the middle school at Anderson that will feed into Roosevelt. So that will gradually decrease those numbers at South. So those numbers will gradually decline each year as the Anderson program becomes more successful. So I am confident that we'll get that down to, you know, to 17, 1800, maybe even larger eventually, or less, you know, as we build up the Anderson program. maybe even larger eventually or less, you know, as we build up the Anderson program.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So thank you so much. So those were my quick clarifying questions. I have more of a comment, if it's okay, Chair, if we still have a couple of minutes for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay, good. What I just wanted to highlight, and Superintendent, feel free to expand upon this, but I wanted to highlight just that, and appreciate again that we have, one of the metrics that we were really looking at is our small, our very small schools with less than 250 students and that we're decreasing the numbers there. But also some of our magnet schools, their, their classes are a little bit smaller and wanting to really give a genuine opportunity for all of our schools to build the enrollment that they need. And so just wanting to, to highlight the opportunity, the kind of fortunate opportunity that we have from these federal dollars to give us a bit of a buffer. So just, just wanting to highlight that. It is a role of our, we are going to need to have. It's difficult to support schools that have less than 250 students. Not only financially, but the opportunities, as we discussed extensively during the CDD, the opportunities are really just fewer for those students. So we want to build that up, but it's also nice that we have some financial cushion, cushion, I would say, to, to give us some time to do that and for communities to truly buy into the school that's near their home. Also, a very specific thing of the federal dollars allowing us to expand our early childhood programming in some of these buildings and what a nice opportunity that will be for, for particularly these magnet schools. So I'm wanting to highlight that, that's one comment. Feel free to expand upon that, Superintendent, but I just felt like we should highlight that for sure. Looks like you want to expand.
Yeah, now's an okay time. Yeah, so I, the reference to the federal dollars, specifically, you know, the funding received in elementary, secondary, emergency relief dollars, one and two, we do have an opportunity to address some of the early childhood work that we've been doing for so long now in Minneapolis Public Schools and targeted that. But when you look at the ESER three dollars, which we do not have our application completed yet, that submission is due on October 1st. We have heard definitely the opportunity from the federal government to be able to stabilize, what they refer to as your stabilization of staffing through this pandemic. And so because of what you just described and the commitment that we've made to our school communities around shoring up resources so that they can be supportive of a well-rounded education, as well as accelerating some of those investments that we know are beneficial for students, we'll be able to capture those dollars moving forward. So those will be considerations that we'll be making based on the feedback that we receive from, again, our community advisory group, but just the general commitment that the board has made through the board budget priorities and values. So we anticipate that, you know, the timing of those funds is, is great for us because that is what we have said all along that we're going to commit to and it aligns very well with the stabilization of staffing. You know, not having to make those reductions or make those decisions about what programs we're not going to offer because we don't have enough student enrollment in those schools. We can avoid that because of the support that we're receiving from those ESER three dollars.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, that's, that's helpful and I think it's really important to just, to just highlight that. And so my final comment, before I turn it over to Director Enz, who has a question, it sounds like, I just wanted to compliment and, and be note out loud that our racially isolated schools have decreased by 50%. And what, how that was, again, a really major conversation. And it's been a major conversation since I've been on the board. This is the largest decrease I've seen, for sure, since I've been on the board, which is over 10 years. So, and the, the fact that there are less extreme numbers even in our racially isolated schools certainly suggests that we're on the right track. And there's, we talk about marketing and there was, and I just want to make a comment about that. There's always, there's always a push and pull, it feels like, between market share and marketing and, and our offering quality education in our schools and who should be marketing and district support and principals. But what I, what I want to say, when we talk about market share and we talk about the 60%, 40% of families choosing some other, some other school. And we talk about, Mr. Moore talked a little bit about who is buying into magnets and who's, who wasn't. And I just, I feel like it's important to state, at least out loud, at least in my community, but I think in, through all of Minneapolis, the connection between race and class and school choice and the importance of being able to be really clear in Minneapolis Public Schools about our values and the value of integration and our belief that that's important. Because I know that in my, in, throughout Minneapolis, this is a conversation we're struggling with, with race, a conversation about race, but it absolutely applies to schools. And I was just having a conversation with someone who was discouraged today. And her child is at one of our summer school programs. They're a Minneapolis Public School parent. And she noted that there were a variety of families taking, using our summer school program. We offer our summer school program to all families, people who go to Minneapolis Public Schools throughout the year and people who don't. And talking to some families who were very clear that they were there for the summer, but not ongoing and their reasons were absolutely about race and class. So sometimes it's not about our schools, it's not about what our schools have to offer, but it's about the students who are in the schools. So I think we just always have to remember that and not apologize for our students, but rather embrace it and be clear about our values and just be aware that that's a factor. We should be, we are, of course, we're aware. We should be not afraid to state that that is, at least in parts of, part of our enrollment and parts of our, you know, quote unquote, market share. So something to think about. Okay, Director Enz, I think you have a question.
Thank you, Director Arnison. I did have a few comments I wanted to make and then sort of a general question. Can you, you can hear me okay, right? Yeah. So first I want to say I'm really grateful that, for one thing in particular, that our sped students, our special education students are given so many choices and have so many opportunities within our district. And I think that's a really unique thing and certainly a really positive, great outcome of the CDD. And I'm glad to see that families are taking advantage of that. And hopefully, as people are more aware of that opportunity, they'll take even more advantage of it. And it might be, you know, I know we are already, in some cases, a draw for many special education families, but it's good that we can be even more so and provide that service to families in need. So I'm really grateful for that. I really appreciate the comment or question of Student Representative Gabra Meskell about ongoing mental health support. And I think that's something that we ought to continue to think about, other areas where we can provide mental health support for students. In this case, you know, we have a sort of a almost esoteric situation where we need to provide supports for students, but it seems like it's a natural area where we can provide more support for students in transitions. And maybe we ought to look at a more formalized, ongoing process for dealing with students in transition and providing mental health support for students in transition within the district and from outside the district and around the district. That might be part of our regular structure going forward. And I'm also really grateful that so many of the things that we projected or hoped that would happen seem to be happening. You know, you're, there's a degree of faith that you have that things will work. And certainly we're, you know, the school year hasn't started yet and, you know, things can change. And, you know, we, we always, there, there are in many cases differences, but, you know, a lot of our indicators are good. To that point, what are some of the things that maybe we're, in a general sense, not sure about and might need to adjust as we go forward? Think, you know, the, the red flags, for lack of a better word, or areas where we maybe don't have enough information yet to know what's happening or what's going to happen? I know that probably there are some of these things already that are showing up. And I know, you know, we're always looking at information and data. So I guess to that point, I'm kind of like wondering what are some of the holes maybe in the data or information? Things that we don't know? And what are we going to do about that? And then I had just a really, like a tiny minute question. I'm wondering about the free and reduced lunch data again. And I know that last year and there was a lot of problems in gathering free and reduced lunch data. And I'm wondering how that process is going? And this is going to sound like a dumb question, but like, what is the data on the data? So for instance, you know, how much information do we get back from people? You know, do we keep track of that? Do we have like a, of the people that we requested that filled out the form? I know we ask everybody to fill out the income forms and for a lot of people, they don't want to do it. You know, it's like, so has that, has that gone down? Has that gone down in particular places? Like when I look at the Wellstone free and reduced lunch data, you know, that to me is like a, oh, maybe people aren't filling out those forms and that's why we're not getting that. And, you know, we talked about that at a couple of the meetings, but I'd like to see some more information about that and at that school in particular as well. And I want to know what we're doing about that. So, and then I just want to sum up, like I want to sort of echo some of the comments of Director Arnison. And I, I want to sort of pull back and take a look at the big picture here and note that, you know, we, we started this process, obviously, a long time ago. There's been a lot of different things that have driven what we've done and we've sort of, everything's been sort of sifted down and distilled at some point or another. And we got to a point where we said, you know, our schools are more segregated than our city is. Granted, our city, is that my hair buzzer? My time's up now? But our schools are more segregated than our city. And so we're going to do what we can about that. Our choice process is contributing to greater segregation in our schools than we have in our city. And I, you know, I think that I am proud of the fact that we have done what we can, but we have to continue to remember that those are our values, as Director Arnison said. And that is, that is what we're trying to achieve through this process. So we have to keep that lens on things. We are not going to be able to, as Minneapolis Public Schools and as the Minneapolis School Board, we're not going to be able to solve school segregation. We're not going to be able to do it, you know? And we can do what we can, but there are so many other entities and policies and forces at play that we have no control over. You know, we have state policies that we have to accept, we have federal policies, and then we have free will of, among people, you know? And all those things come into play and impact where we are. So when I think about this past month and the school integration lawsuit and just the idea that school districts are being sued, not really school districts, but states, right? And then they try to kind of pass the buck down to the school districts, I think. Like, it's impossible task that we're being handed and it's, it's not really right. And also to expect us to make changes that are going to solve this problem is really denying the nature of the problem and it's not going to help. So I'm proud that we're doing what we can. We're not going to be able to fix everything. And certainly we're not going to be able to solve the issue of school segregation as a school board. But, you know, I am proud of the work that we have done, so. And with that, I guess I'll turn it maybe back to either Superintendent Graff or a comment on what, you know, what we're looking at and maybe also Senior Officer Moore. I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Director Enz, for your comments. I think just to start with where you ended, we are continuing to work to create conditions for success, you know? And if I've learned anything in the last 16 months or 18 months, whatever it's been through the pandemic, it's the importance and significance of public education and what we value and how we communicate those values. To your point, we will not be able to undo what exists within our city. At the same time, we have taken approach of dismantling and redesigning our structures and our systems with our policies. And that is a, both a necessary and a bold move because we know the implications of what that means should nothing else happen in our city. Those are the steps we can take. And so I appreciate your comments with it, appreciate the board's commitment of the values and helping us continue to move down that path, knowing that we are going to have to make adjustments. As you mentioned, the support of mental health and the, the need for maybe us to consider, how do we assist in transitioning that? That is something that has universally come up again, time and time again, when we talk about what do we need to do to, to move through this pandemic and into the future? It's to have that mental health support. And that idea of transition is so critical from our earliest learners coming into school, from our elementary students transitioning to middle school and then to high school, as well as just a general transition. So I, I do appreciate you lifting that up and know that that has been part of a discussion already with our, our advisory group around mental health. And Student Representative Gabra Meskell has been a big part of that. So I look forward to more progress in those conversations moving forward. You also mentioned around the, what, what will be different or what haven't we seen yet with, with, you know, data perhaps? And I'll, I'll share a little bit of speculative things and then maybe ask Senior Officer Moore to, to talk about that, what he sees from a data lens, as well as we might need to come back to getting more information on the free and reduced lunch. Because I, I have, again, you know, some anecdotal comments that I've heard from people around just how difficult it is to, to capture that data. And I think we are also faced with a balance of respecting where individuals are with their privacy and the cautiousness of, you know, the application and filling out forms. I think we've heard from staff and other members of the district who have children in the, the school district who have said, I've been asked to fill out the forms, you know, repeatedly and we're trying to do it in a way that does not encroach on someone's decision, but also lets them know like this is valuable information that we can utilize. So I would say we probably want to try and get more information for you, specifically around Wellstone. What does that look like? And then just what do those numbers look like as we compare across the district? I know in talking with our government relations lobbyist, Josh Downham, he's, he significantly said the challenges is there, you know, across the state, but I can get more information on that. Regarding the, what we don't know around data, I think, again, we're, we're mindful that these are projections and this is what we have today. I will acknowledge we're still transitioning from a space of 18 months or whatever it's been of a pandemic into maybe a new space and a new era and, and new opportunities for families where they're partaking in summer experiences, which might influence their decisions again in the fall, as well as we've expanded some of our, our, our discussions around our lottery and how would we look at our lottery and monitor that carefully? As mentioned tonight, you know, we did our first lottery draw and did we get enough information out to families with that? So I think that, again, more messaging around the lottery and what the outcomes are of lottery requests, I think could change some of those numbers going forward. And, and just knowing that the word of mouth transition will also play into that. As families settle into their new school, they'll have a reaction to it optimistically and hopefully it'll be positive, but also knowing that it's, it's an individual experience. And so I think that will play a huge part in how we respond to those situations. So those are a few of the, just the kind of the reflections I have around it. But I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Moore and see if he has any more specifics around data or anything further to add around the free and reduced lunch kind of indication that we've seen over the last several months.
Thank you, Superintendent, Chair, and Director Enz. I, I really do appreciate that, and I'll just elaborate, the superintendent mentioned the data. So, so these are projections based upon a new model. And, and so our, our projection model, we had a bit more leeway because as we, you know, had wider attendance areas, we had more of a zone approach, we were able to place students in different locations. We're now in a attendance area, essentially that's where students attend school. So, so as we're making projections, I'm waiting to see what the data looks like in October, actually September, to see if our projections are holding true. After 21, 22, our projections will be stronger because we'll clearly know who attends a particular school. So, so we're just transitioning and I, I think I'm very blessed to have some additional resources through ESER to help us transition through a year that's, that's unknown. resources through ESSER to help us transition through a year that, that's unknown. So I think that's the, the big pieces. These are projections. You know, we do what we can, and, and what, what is in our control, as mentioned, and we talked about integration and the availability of housing, what's in our controls to have stronger schools and to address them, the inequities across our, our district relative to zip code. And so I do believe we're entering 21-22 with a, a very, very concrete approaches to address those inequities. The ability for us to be successful, this is very technical plan at the beginning. Now we're moving into the adaptive phase, which is climate, and, and it's gonna be imperative that our, our principal and our teachers at our schools embrace those new families. So when we talk about our projections, we know that students are identified to attend schools. Now it's gonna come down to the extent to which our principals and teachers are welcoming those new communities in relative to our climate framework. I've seen some very nice signs even of students, as I shared, a previous, a previous board member, where students are welcoming other students. I mean, that's climate. It's, it's that personal touch, it's the relationship approach now, this is on relationships, that's really going to allow those families to feel welcome as they move into their new communities. Now, that's the adaptive work we talk about. The technical work is changing the boundaries, of changing the approach from more of a zone model to a community school model of having centralized magnets. But now we're, we're entering the phase of, of our principals showing their models of leadership, our teachers showing their leadership and embracing new families and making people feel welcome. I do believe we have stronger schools moving forward. But Director Arnson, I, I do think, these are projections that the superintendent mentioned, and, and so I'm waiting to see to what extent our projections, the first year we attempted to do this, going to a community school model for the first year, to what extent do the whole true or not. And then I'm very confident, because of our team, both at the superintendent, senior, senior level, my colleagues, our principals, that we're gonna meet our outcomes as identified in the CDD. And again, this is the first year, and I feel very positive with the data that, that we're sharing, but I, I'm looking forward to the next presentation to see the actuals and, and to see what we need to build upon. But there will be something that we need to build upon, and as the superintendent mentioned, certainly the lottery, I'm very excited. Next year, as we're in person, we did previously have plans to get on the ground and do outreach and, and do the mobile enrollment registration. So I'm very confident, we do have a plan to, again, increase the number of folks that are, are participating in our lottery process next year. But, but it's a testament to the team and to those that work in Minneapolis and the families. We, we're working through a pandemic, and we've worked through a lot of emotional work and still working through that with the, with all the events that have happened in our city regarding race and police brutality. And, and so we, we come forward and, and, and we're ready to go in the fall, and, and I think we'll have a, be a stronger Minneapolis Public Schools. But looking forward to seeing the numbers and presenting that to all of you, to see the extent to which our assumptions hold. And I'm, I'm kind of fired up. I, I'm very happy with the direction we're heading, and thank you all for your support as a, as a board that puts issues of equity and race at the forefront. That, that's really important to folks, so, so thank you, board members, for that, for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you, directors, for your questions. Director Sorio, do you make questions or comments this time? I'd like to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wanted to go back into the mental support issue. I mean, that's something that is very dear and personal to me, and I'm extremely grateful that our district actually, we do have therapists on site. That's something that is not the reality for other districts. And I, I want to ask, so we mentioned that we have therapists on every single school, correct? And now, how do we ensure also that we do have therapists that are bilingual and bicultural when it comes to like schools like Anderson, for example, and Jefferson, too? So do we have enough therapists, and how do we ensure that we do provide that support? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Sorio, thank you for your, your support and comments regarding the, the mental health, school-based mental health supports that we have. I will ask Associate Superintendent Cox to give a little more, more detail on it. What we do have right now are contracts at all of our schools, and so to be clear, that it, that is support that did take place this past spring, and it's something that we recognized was a need, and we were grateful to be able to, to make those contacts and those, those connections. But specifically to your question on how do we ensure that we have individuals who are culturally and represent, you know, language needs of support, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Cox to kind of give, give an update on how we monitor that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So each of our agencies has to go through a RFP process, so they go through a pretty stringent review, and being able to have cultural relevancy and competency that matches our schools is one of our number one priorities. Once they make it into that, that pool, and we kind of, then they get to be in the pool, each of our schools has the opportunity to interview each of the, the agencies to look for matches for demographics, who their therapists are, looking at cultural competency of the agency as we move forward. We also realized that being able to support Minneapolis Public Schools, it takes some infrastructure for an agency, right? And so we realized that we have a lot of expertise in our community, both with our external stakeholders and small agencies and individual mental health therapists, as well as we have a lot of expertise and cultural expertise in our district. So what we started this year was something we called the Cultural Consultancy. And what we did was ask people to apply who thought that they had something to bring from a cultural aspect to Minneapolis Public Schools. We accepted everybody, and we offered them mini grants so that we could connect them with schools who needed expertise and consultancy in the area of, of culture in, in relation to mental health supports. That has been one of the most exciting things we've done, and we've really been able to not only support our schools in a really different way, and having them be in an interactive process with the consultants, but also to lift up the expertise of our community members as well as our internal staff to really provide support outside of their job role, or maybe they're not able to go through our RFP process, because as I said, it does take, you know, quite a bit of interest, infrastructure to be able to do that. So we're really excited. We started that this spring. Several of them are also working with us for our Mental Health Institute this week, so we're really excited about that. And then they'll start a new contract. We'll start out with, with small mini grants, and as the need continues, we'll look at, at funding those and providing additional funding. So just a shout out there, we'll continue to work with our networks to make sure we get the word out. And again, as I said, we really want to make sure that we are lifting up our community providers. We're also, again, we also know our parents are experts, right? And so how do we lift them up and making them partners in this idea of supporting not only the mental health needs of our, of our students and families, but also their wellness? So sometimes I think, I, I'm sometimes surprised when people are like, we don't have enough mental health supports, and I think, wow, we have a lot of mental health supports, right? So wanting to make sure that we're framing in a way that's culturally respective, so that people understand that mental health is not just about illness, but it's also about wellness, and that we're really supporting that through the district in all levels, in all grade levels, and then also our families. I think our agencies have done a great job, as well as our, our, our staff that work for, that work in Minneapolis, of supporting families through the pandemic, and I think we'll continue to open that up to make sure that we're not only supporting just the students, but that whole family unit.
Director Elamene.
Thank, thank you, Chair Ellison. And everyone, good evening. I do apologize that I have some issues with my camera, so I am here with just audio only. But I did, wanted to just make several comments in regards to the adaptive piece or the plan. Glad to hear that the principals and associate superintendents will be working more closely to the families so that they're more accessible to our families within our community. But I'm also a little concerned about the numbers, and I know we don't have everything yet, and it won't be available until the start of next school year, with our schools trying to keep those numbers over the 200 within our inner-city schools. I'm just hoping that we will continue to work diligently to make sure that we can do everything possible to make sure that those numbers stay above that, to prevent any type of closure or anything that may have to come to the table, but also to make sure that these adaptive piece is not just a temporary situation, that we make that the model and the expectation as we move on throughout our school years, so that we are better to tell our stories and have more success stories to share within our community. So just those two concerns, I guess I wanted to just share, and maybe one of you can give me some insight on that, please. Thank you.
Director Elamene, thank you for your, your comments and acknowledging what I heard to be two pieces. One was just the, the close connection to our, our families from our building administrators and associate superintendents. And again, the role of the associate superintendent is to provide that, that support for the respective school they oversee, and more specifically, the, the building principal. But certainly, that has been the, the communication and the, the practice over the last several weeks of those transitions that are happening for, for families, you know, to make sure that we are as best as possible handing off those, those transitions so parents can start to feel the, the new environment and what that will be like for their child as they, they take on a new, new pathway of learning in that school or school community. And then regarding the, the numbers of schools that we have that are under 250, that was, again, a, a very, very hotly debated conversation about how do we address the, the low enrollment that we have throughout the district? And, and certainly, we felt a multifaceted approach was the best way to do that, looking at not only the, the programming and what we're offering, but the policies and practices that we have around our, our enrollment, as well as the, the boundary changes and the climate framework. So a myriad of approaches to address a myriad of, of needs, but I think from a, from an efficiency and from a, a financial practicality, you know, the school's enrollment has to be built up in order for it to be sustained. And so we made a conscious decision to, to move with a comprehensive design so that we could divide conditions for success at all of our schools, and our commitment has been and remains, you know, for the next three years to create the, the greatest opportunity for success. And as mentioned by, I think, a couple of other directors' conversations, you know, we, we have an amount of what we can control, and we're, we're gonna continue to, to do that. We also recognize that not everyone may be aligned to some of our values, so it's incumbent upon us as we move forward each year with implementation to reevaluate where we are successful within our control and to, to be clear about messaging that, those positive strengths and those things that are happening. So appreciate you lifting that up and recognize that, you know, we, we have made a reduction of the number of schools on that list of less than 250, but we have a few more that we want to work on, and I think, again, it's, it's something that's gonna happen to the best of our abilities over the next couple of years. So I appreciate the conversation around that.
Thank, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you. Oh, real quickly, a couple of things that I haven't come up. I am like, excited to see numbers, yeah, on our projections, like, we had hoped, we wanted to start a time, present this particular time, in our magnets, so I wonder if the public expectations can type these numbers in, in our private schools, um, in, in September, October, if these schools start tonight. Real quick, one question, on what process is going to be happening. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the, the process, the, the, the process. I know I got, um, the email, but we do not have to do the results, because I know it was such an emotional, it's a emotional dream, and it's been, um, the best of it. As a parent, one of the things that I struggle with is, um, I must say, because of parents, I feel there's a, that's, I think, two different schools, um, it's a lot of work, and that is a choice, that, um, to be in so many companies.
Chair, Chair Ellison, I apologize for interrupting, but I'm having a hard time hearing you with the audio, and I, I know you have information that is really important for us to hear, so if, if I could ask, could you maybe try again and see if I can hear what you're saying?
Sure. I had a, had something covering the speaker.
That's much better. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was thanking folks on the appeals process and, and just talking about personally the struggles that I've gone through with some of the emails we've received. As a parent with four children, sometimes in three different schools, I was saying it's hard. It's a hard thing to do, and this was a choice that me and my family had made, but it's still difficult. And I know some of the, some of the emails that I'm getting are from parents with ninth graders who are being placed in schools different than their older siblings in high school. And that was one thing I never, ever had to deal with, is having more than one child at a high school age in two different schools. And so as we go forward, I don't know what kind of changes we can make for this year, but as we talk about lessons learned, I'm hoping that's something that we're looking at, how we're dealing with siblings specifically, who either because of family circumstances have to move, or because of the different, the lines that we've drawn, the new lines that we've made, their younger siblings are ending up in schools not the same as their older siblings. So just a couple of comments, and so if one of you want to tackle, there's more comments than questions, but, but thank you for this work.
Yeah, Chair Ellison, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Again, I think the, what I heard there is the, the ongoing challenge of anytime we take on a, a boundary change like this, and I think the, to the point that was made earlier, maybe through a director's comment about the number of schools we have and the population enrollment, you know, again, we're trying to, we're trying to create conditions for success across the district, and then we have over 60 schools and see significant disparities of what programs are being offered throughout our schools, and recognize that the, the way to build up those programs is to be able to have resources in those schools. It does take a shift of population, and, and we, we made the conscious decision to do this at once versus over a period of time, because we felt it was too critical for us to, to make this shift, you know, with the values that the board has shared and what we, we hold to be important in terms of our schools needing to be adequately and having those, those opportunities for kids. We, we didn't have years and years to move through this. You know, we had to make the decision with the boundary change, which again is one, one part of the comprehensive district design, but it is one that I know has a great deal of emotion attached to it, as you already mentioned, in the, the emails that you've received. So our commitment does remain to, to ensuring that we are monitoring things and putting supports in place where we can, and, and knowing that this year is a crucial year, and asking families to give us the, the time to build the supports for their students as they enter that new space, build the supports around them, you know? The experiences that they may have had with one child will certainly be different with this child as they're coming into the space. And so I just, again, recognize that that's a difficult transition, and through every boundary change that I've been through, you know, these things continue to come up, and, and just know that we'll, we'll continue to monitor our, our process moving forward in the future, but appreciate all the, the care and commitment that people have provided at this point with the, with our process for making these transitions.
Thank you, Superintendent. And you know, I- And you know, Kate, I was one of those board members with all of you. I am completely behind this comprehensive district design. I believe in it, and want to see it, I believe it's going to be successful, and it's going to work for our students, it's going to do great things. So, thank you, Superintendent. Seeing no more raised hands, if we can close out the discussion part of this evening, is there anything else you would like to say, Superintendent, in closing?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge that this is our final school board meeting for the 2021 school year, and I won't go into a great length of detail around what this means in terms of reflection, but I would just offer to the board, our staff, the public in general, that, you know, we've been through a lot this past year, and obviously, an understatement. But throughout that timeframe, we've had a lot of opportunities for us to celebrate some successes that we've had as well. And so, I'd just like to encourage others to, as you reflect back on the year as we close out this school year, you know, take some time to acknowledge the work that you've done, either in the classroom, in your department, in your position as a director. Acknowledge that this has not been easy, and it has not been something that we could have anticipated, but more than just surviving, I think we have accepted the challenge, and we have, as mentioned already here, have kind of doubled down our energy and our commitment to what we're doing. And so, I just want to say thank you to the board for all the work that you've done, and the support that you've provided for the district and our students, families, and staff. Thank you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Senior Officer Moore, Associate Superintendent Pax, and your teams, and thank you, directors, for tonight, and this conversation, this discussion. I'm now going to adjourn tonight's meeting, our last meeting of the school year, like Superintendent said. We will meet again in August. Please get outside, get some fresh air, take a breath, get some rest. So, thank you. Good night.